Good evening, welcome to the July 11th Lebanon City Council Meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
.........................................................
I'll move on to the roll call members. Matt, a quick roll please.
Mike Kincaid.
Present.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Morris Jones.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Present.
John Copeland.
Here.
Brent Wheat.
Present.
Sierra Messenger.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Are there any changes or edits to the minutes?
Make the motion when you approve the minutes.
We have motion to approve, they're second.
Second.
Second from John, let's hear say aye.
Aye.
Supposed, minutes are approved. All right, move on to old business. First item up will be Resolution 2022-16, Council to Consider a Fiscal Plan for the Project Leap, and Ben Bajragh will be presenting this.
Good evening, Council members. As you'll recall from our last meeting, we did hear the first reading of an annexation ordinance for the Project Leap District. As part of the process, you're also required to consider a fiscal plan associated with that annexation, and it does need to be considered and adopted prior to considering the annexation ordinance. That's the reason it's first on your agenda this evening. Whoops, get my, waking my computer up here. And I'll walk through some of the highlights for you. So in terms of the fiscal plan, we'll look at both the expected or anticipated additional costs associated with annexing the property to provide services to the area, and also the estimated changes to assessed value and revenue impact, again, related to that annexation. So to maybe just a little bit of background on this here, in terms of the annexation, you have the existing assessed value of the property that will be brought into the city. And then we have projected or proposed investment to be made in the area related to the first project in the area, which is the Eli Lilly Project. So we have incorporated both of those things into the fiscal plan. And I'll walk through a little bit there, and again, related to the Eli Lilly Project, the state will be establishing the Innovation Development District designation on that site. What that means then is it's essentially the state's version of a TIF district that allows them to collect increment related to additional investment in the site, and then also incremental state income tax and sales tax, and then use that as an incentive for the project. And the reason they're doing that is based on the needs and the requests that came from Lilly related to that project. Significant infrastructure investments will be made related to road, water, and utility infrastructure, other utility infrastructure, and really looking at the state's ability to accomplish those things with the significant amount of investment needs to be made upfront. It's $75-plus million. The IDD was really a necessary designation. So what that means, and in terms of how that impacts the fiscal plan, is 88% of the increase in assessed value will be collected in that increment, and 12% of that assessed value then pass through to all of the local taxing entities, city, schools, county. They'll all receive about 12% of the assessed value, and that will impact then their revenue there. So then in terms of just kind of running through, if they want to pull the screen up here, hopefully this is going to work. So this is the chart that shows the estimated increase in, or net assessed value of the annexation area is this first column here. And as you can see, the first year where you'll see an increase is 2023 paid 2024. That $5.5 million is the existing assessed value of the annexation area upon the date of annexation. And then you will see it starts to incrementally increase in the following years, and that's based on the programmed or scheduled investment to be made by Eli Lilly as part of the project. And they're estimating year one, which is 2023, to be investing about $180, $185 million. In 2024, it jumps up to a little over $400 million. 20, or 2025, then it's about $560 million. 2026 is a little, about $314 million. So what these numbers show here is the 12% of that proposed investment that would pass through to each of the taxing entities, that's why you're seeing 26 pay 27, which in here is $314 million, we're just seeing an incremental amount of $144 million. So this would be the actual assessed value that would pass through to each of those taxing entities, including the city. Now, in terms of how our taxes are calculated, that's not something that we do locally in terms of tax levy. That is something that's determined by the state through the DLGF, and they look essentially at the previous year's tax levy, and they apply a programmed formula to it, usually about 4% a year. So the tax levy is actually a programmed increase every year. So when you see big increases in assessed value like that, that doesn't automatically translate to a huge jump in the tax levy, because that's determined by that program through the state. So what this shows you here in the chart then is, this is the estimated net assessed value of the city entirely, which is a little over $1 billion. And then it starts to increase as you see those increases being added on related to the Lilly Project. And then you see here, the total assessed value jumps to about $1.5 billion by 2026 paid 2027. What you see here then is the estimate of the property tax levy for the city is in this fourth column here, for 2022 paid 2023, it's just short of $9 million. And then these numbers are projected based on growth, the annual growth factor. So you can see down here in item four, that identifies what the growth factors are, what they're projected to be, 4.5% for '23, 4%, 4.1, 4 and 4.1. So that is a programmed increase of that tax levy. So what actually happens when you see a large increase in assessed value, that tax levy is programmed. So when the assessed value increases, it actually causes a decrease in the property tax rate if your assessed value is increasing faster than your tax levy. So what you see here, based on just the 12% pass-through, our property tax rate for '22 paid '23 is .7953. And as that assessed value starts increasing faster than the tax levy does, you see the property tax rate start to decrease as a result of that. So while Eli Lilly is going to be paying million, million and a half in property taxes, what it's done is that's offset by decreases in everybody else's taxes associated with the property tax rate. So that's what this chart shows, is over those five years that they've estimated those increases, and the increase in the net assessed value to the city, there's a programmed increase in the tax levy that's determined by the DLGF. And with that large increase in assessed value, it actually causes the property tax rate to decrease at the same time the tax levy is increasing for the city. So that shows you kind of on the revenue side how it's impacted, and I'll, it'll be summarized here in this next page. So the estimated net levy increase, as a result of the annexation, is just short of $36,000 in 2024, and that's just associated with the annexation area. And then you'll see it's essentially a 4% increase for '25 and '26. So you have essentially one time to increase the tax levy at the time of annexation. So in this case, because there's $5.5 million in assessed value in that area, the increase in tax levy is based on the assessment at that time. So it happens at that time, and then after that, it's just a programmed increase. You don't see any additional increase in tax levies later. There is a process where you can appeal that to DLGF. If you've seen a significant increase in assessed value, then you can appeal that and get it increased on a one-time basis based on that request. But all factors remaining the same, this, the increase in overall tax levy to the city is about $40,000 by 2026 related to the annexation, because the increase in levy happens at the time of annexation before that investment is, starts to take place. Any questions on that before I go on to some of the other items? Okay, so then on the cost side, looking at those additional costs, this is the chart that shows the additional costs we expected, and it's basically incremental costs associated with street departments have to maintain additional, I think it's about four miles of streets. So this is, and essentially is a summary of their costs. We have a cost per mile of street that we calculated based on our existing miles of streets and the existing budget for the street department. Looking at adding four miles of streets to their inventory would result in, in 2023 of an increase of about $16,000 on costs, it's for them to start maintaining, plowing, et cetera, those streets that would be added. Then the other one that will be related to the police department, fuel and repairs, again, additional miles of streets that they'll be patrolling, it's about $5,700, increasing, obviously just kind of standard annual increases as you see over time here. So in terms of other services, we don't expect there to be any significant increases to the cost of providing planning service to the area. Fire is based on obviously runs, so they're not necessarily patrolling. Some of those other services don't necessarily, are going to see small increases to providing services to those areas, nothing notable, other than what we see happening with the street and police department, who actually have to, will have to be doing runs on the streets that are out there. On the capital side, the IDC may be able to fill in a little bit of information on the IDD, but I know their proposal, their proposed incentive package to Eli Lilly is north of $75 million, and that includes the primary infrastructure needs for this annexation area. So that'll be covered through the IDD as opposed to any local costs associated with infrastructure improvements. So there are no infrastructure improvements proposed at this time from the local, from the city of Lebanon. So we do not have any capital expenses identified in this report, because they're all going to be covered by, through the IDD by the state. So this, this is essentially summarizes what we expect to be the incremental costs associated with annexing this property as it relates to, relates to that. So, just to kind of summarize those things on the fiscal plan, the costs obviously will start in 2023, once the annexation is complete, a year that we won't see any revenue necessarily, because there's, if you remember, your tax payments are all a year behind when you're, when you're annexed. So even though it'll be annexed in 2022, that means the first tax payments that will be made to the city are in 2024. So in 2023, obviously, we won't see any additional tax levy or revenue based on the annexation, but the cost will start, so that's when you see a little bit of a negative $22,000. But then starting in 2024, you'll see that we have the tax levy increase associated with the annexation. Again, this is not Eli Lilly's tax bill. This is just the portion of the tax levy that's associated with the annexation, $36,000 versus $22,000 worth of cost, et cetera, et cetera, through 2026. So that is a quick summary here. Again, any questions on the cost side for me, or any questions about the IDD, how that impacts locally?
Yeah, I do. This stuff is complicated to me. May not be for some other people, but that 12% pass-through, and you said it was $1.5 million?
So...
The city receives, or we put that with the county, school, and the city?
This is just municipal. This is just the municipal portion. So, so what gets passed through is the, a portion of the assessed value. So going back to the first chart I showed, this, this is the assessed value of, of the annexation area over time as Lilly makes investments. You can see it's slowly increasing to about $144 million by 2026 paid 2027. So that is the 12% pass-through of the overall AV increase in that area, which is more like a billion and a half dollars. So Lilly's tax bill will prob, based on that $144 million, is probably about million to million and a half dollars. But the overall increase to our tax levy, which is determined by the state, is only about $36,000. Because the tax levy increase happens at the time of annexation before Lilly has made any investments. So Lilly's tax payment will become a larger portion of the overall tax levy over time, which means that everybody else's portion of the tax levy will decrease, which is why you see a decrease in the property tax rate.
So how much will the city get?
The city, in terms of the tax levy increase, is about $36,000, which is what these numbers are here.
I mean, the 12% pass-through?
Oh, and so, in terms of the assessed value, it's about $144 million, but the overall increase in the tax levy is only $36,000.
Okay, I guess I'm not making myself clear.
Okay.
So the IDD takes money out, and we're going to get part of that tax money, correct?
Yes.
And how much would that be?
The, their total tax bill is going to be significant, but the change in the tax levy due to the annexation is only $36,000.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out how much the city's going to get, as far as...
$36,000. Yeah. So the, so the tax levy increase happens at the time of annexation before Eli Lilly has made an investment. That's the $36,000. We don't get any further increases on the tax levy in future years for, on an annexation. It's a programmed increase, that 4%. So even though Eli Lilly is making a significant, a huge investment, the actual tax levy is only a 4% annual increase, that's why it stays at about $36,000, $37,000, $38,000.
But if you notice, Mike, the property tax rate for the, for every citizen of Lebanon would decrease about 15%, right? So if you pull that screen back up, guys, yeah, go up there, Ben?
Yep.
Right, so it's going from .80, or .8050 right now, down to .6795 for every resident of Lebanon, right? So the...
So by this last column here, 26 paid 27, the $144 million that's passed through, their tax bill will be about $1.5 million, just the city's portion. But the overall, but what the city will see in terms of increases over the year before is only $38,000, because again, their investment is happening after the annexation already took place, and after the tax levy has already increased based on the annexation. So our tax, our overall tax levy, the amount we collect, will only increase by $38,000. And that's because the tax levy is programmed by the state, it's not based on assessed value locally. So that, that tax levy is fixed, which means if your assessed value jumps, that means your tax rate has to go down, so that your tax levy doesn't go above that programmed amount.
I got that. The property taxes collected will go to pay for the state's infrastructure, and we get part of that past, I mean, how many dollars and cents will we get?
That's, that's the $38,000.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so, so their overall tax bill is about $1.5 million, but the actual increase to the overall tax levy is only $38,000. So they, so basically what happens, they will pay more, and everybody else will pay less.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
Ben, so the cost, the cost here on the street, and the police and fire and everything, is all related to the infrastructure that is currently there in the annexation area, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the, the state is going to go ahead and, and pay for the infrastructure needed in the development area for the Lilly, okay? So I'm assuming that that means they're going to be improving the, the roads to get to that area. Because looking at the Banff, there's a lot of county roads still that is not being annexed into the city. You know, like the intersection 153 and 0 North is not being annexed into the city.
Correct.
Okay, 300 North, part of 300 North going across 39 is not in the city, it's going to have to be improved, because somebody's going to use that road.
For sure.
Wet Road from 300 North back in Lebanon will eventually, over time, have to be improved, because somebody's, because that'll be increased traffic going that direction as well. Then you look at Wet Road from north of 450 all the way up to 47.
Mm-hmm.
And I realize these are county roads.
Yeah.
Okay, they're not ours, okay? But what I'm getting at is that, is the state going to improve all these roads in that area to make this development happen, or are they just going to piecemeal for the development area itself?
Well, I don't want to necessarily answer for the state, but I know that they're looking at all those scenarios where all of those roads will become access points and to, to the development area. So like I said, I don't want to answer for the state, but I know they're looking at all those roads in that road network, and what's going to be needed in order to access that site. Certainly, the primary access point is going to come from the new interchange in the vicinity of 300 North, and so most of your traffic's going to be coming off the interstate, but they are looking at that entire system to see what would need to be done to improve it.
Because what I see is, if there's no help in those, those roads, structures that are in those areas, then that's going to come back to the city and the county and have to maintain it.
Yeah.
So these, all these fiscal plans honestly don't mean diddly to me, because we end up, it ends up costing us a little more money in the end over years anyway. And so they don't make a whole lot of, we're going to get, we see some added revenue coming in, and that's it, but it doesn't pay for the cost of the roads and everything that need to be fixed to get to those sections, so that's just my opinion.
Yep.
I've got one more.
Yep, good.
Flame, what is, says IDD allows the IEDC to additionally collect incremental state income and sales taxes that are be used, be used to leverage to secure the Lilly investment. What is, how does that work?
So those are state revenue sources, they're not local revenue sources. But they, essentially, they would calculate the base level of income and sales tax collected in the annex, in the IDD area, which probably at this point is very low. And then anything above and beyond that, that, that occurs over the time period of the IDD would be collected into a fund to be reinvested in the area, just like a local TIF would do with, with, with property taxes. So they would, they would do, this basically, like I said, it's similar to a local TIF, which our local TIFs are just property taxes, but in the case of the IDD, it's property taxes, state sales tax, and state, state income tax.
So people who work in that area will pay, their state income tax part of it will be collected by the IDD?
Corporate income tax.
Correct. But their local income tax would pass to the local entities?
All the local income taxes they pay would, would come 100% to the city and other local taxing entities.
And the sales tax in those areas go to the IDD?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Yes, and sales tax currently already goes 100% to the state now.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
But if there's a food and beverage, it's not being proposed, right, but a food and beverage tax, right, that stays local as well.
Yeah.
Right.
So the only local revenue source that's, that's impacted by the IDD is property taxes.
Yeah. Any further questions for Ben?
So I, so as a state is creating like a TIF in this, this area, okay? As we create a TIF that runs for 25 years and is done, okay? This TIF area is going to, like the state's going to have, is going to run for about, the way I understand, about 30 years.
I think it's 25 also.
Well, I, I read Senate Bill 361, and it says 30 years. And it also says that they can extend that and carry that on a little longer than that. And, you know, I, I took the liberty to read the bill to try to understand how all this process happened. I'm not really that fond of that bill, but I do want economic development to happen in our area somewhere, okay? But it just, here, here we got something that's going to be taxed for 30 years, this could drop off or could be extended. I don't know if the future leaders of City Lebanon will have an opportunity to help make that decision whether it's extended or not. There's no place in there that tells you anything like that. And then if, then, you know, and I don't know if the, if it'll get built out in 30 years or 20 years or what, but if there's any revenue left over, it gets to stay in the pot, which that's a good idea. But the other problem with it is, I noticed is that the money that the state gets in that that's left in there, they could use that money anywhere else throughout the state of Indiana. And I have kind of a hard idea thinking that we're taking Boone County money out of Boone County to use it, don't clap, because I don't, I don't want that, I did not ask it for that. I'm just kind of concerned that, somebody from IEDC or needs to answer that question, why, why, our perfect legislature like they are did something that I think is completely wrong to allow this to happen? And, and I hate to tell you, I'm, I don't like big government, you know, okay? And when you're looking at the state of Indiana buying into these things, and then taking over and trying to buy it in somewhere else, and then holding these things for a long time, it's scary for the future of, in my opinion.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the question. David Rosenberg with the IDC, thank you for your time tonight. So I think it's important twofold. Without the IDD in this particular case, it's very unlikely Eli Lilly would have made this investment, their first investment in the state since 1989. As we are working through the process, the IDD was, was not the preferred route of our side, and we worked very closely with city and county officials on the incentive package, and the sides were extremely far apart. There was no way Eli Lilly was going to put, agree to the deal that we were able to put together using just local and state traditional incentives. The IDD was passed for these transformational projects, because when they're making this investment, the state taxes would normally go back to the general fund. Now they're being collected here to be reinvested into this area, not only to help the incentive package offered to Lilly, but to also invest in the infrastructure, both utility and roadways, ongoing over the next 30 years back into, back into this area. So it actually benefits the community, because it is taking those taxes, capturing them here, making them be reinvested into the region to support the project. It's also important to note, you know, there's almost 1,400 acres being annexed, only 600 of those acres will currently have the IDD designation on them. It is not a wholesale 1,400-acre IDD. These are very project-specific, project by project as we go through them, so not, not every project in this, in this area will have to have that designation. We may try to use traditional tools on, on other projects that may come about.
Oh, okay, that was going to be another question. So, but the, but the, and that idea works, I mean, that's the way it's supposed to work, okay? But my thought, you know, going back to was that, taking that money and using it somewhere else in the state to do another, create, upgrade another project, I think is keep that, those dollars here for Boone County. It's not necessarily just for this project, is, as we go further, if we go further and go out and bigger things come in, I don't know. If it happens to go further, we need those dollars staying here, is my opinion.
And the great thing about our, our great legislature is they're in every January, and so I'm sure this legislation from last year will be tweaked again, and something we can certainly look at.
I understand the process, I understand why, just don't agree with all of them.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Ben or the IDC?
No. I did want to point out one other thing. So, so again, going back to how the tax levy is determined, so even if in 15, 20, 25 years, or whatever it is, all of that additional assessed value is passed through, it's not going to change our tax levy. It's going to be a 4% increase every year. So all that, all that's going to serve to do is decrease the property tax rate again. So it's, it's not like it'll be a windfall to the city to allow the other 88% of the property taxes to pass through. Yeah.
Okay. Any additional questions for Ben?
No, sir.
Okay. Rob?
I did have one quick question. So the 12% pass-through, is that blanket across any future expansion, or is it a case-by-case basis?
It's, in that 600-acre area, that would apply.
Right, but we're talking 1,400 if...
That 12% is a minimum number, right? That's by state law, the minimum, right? That can be negotiated, but this is a very, an infrastructure-intensive site needed, obviously adding a new interchange, right? So that's maybe why this first one may be 12%, but, you know, I can speak to David. Well, all these are negotiable down the future.
That was my basic question.
Yeah. Yeah, so this, the IDD and the 12% pass-through doesn't apply to the entire 1,400 acres, it's just the 600-acre site for Lilly that's part of the annexation.
Okay. Okay. Rob, can you read the resolution, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Resolution 2022-16 establishes a fiscal plan for the annexation of certain territory to the city of Lebanon. Whereas the area to be annexed is legally described in Exhibit A and B. Pursuant to Indiana Code, this council is required to adopt a written fiscal plan prior to the passage of an annexation ordinance 2022-19. Whereas a required fiscal plan that's included in Exhibit C and attached hereto has been prepared and presented to this council for the city of Lebanon for consideration. Whereas the fiscal plan has been reviewed and complies with the requirements of Indiana Code. Therefore, be it resolved, this council, meeting in its regularly session, that the fiscal plan is hereby approved and approved for the areas sought to be annexed.
Okay, thank you, Rob. I'm going to go for a public comment, David, or can't you guys want to say anything additional on the resolution before we... Okay. Okay. If there's any public comment concerning Resolution 2022-16, please step forward. Again, please keep your comments to the resolution specifically, and state your name and address for the record. We do it with full house, about three minutes, please.
Certainly.
Good evening, Sturridge, Walker, 418 West Main Street. I would just like you guys to know that I completely support this project and the annexation, very much in favor of the idea of a large corporation like Lilly coming in, developing land, that will get developed regardless, and widening the tax burden on the citizens of Lebanon. Because it would certainly invite more projects like this, and we could... Because it would certainly invite more projects like this, and we could eventually get down to, hey, welcome to Lebanon, the city where you don't have to pay property taxes. I think they'd get a lot more people in here than a expensive sign over the interstate. Thank you.
Thank you, Stewart. Any further comments on the resolution? Okay. Any further discussion from council?
No, sir.
Okay. Would entertain a motion then concerning Resolution 2022-16?
Make a motion, we approve Resolution 22-16.
We have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-16, is our second. Second from Morris, for discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed? We'll have public comment on the annexation as well, I mean, feel free, okay? Go ahead.
A couple weeks ago, I was outside with my, uh...
Sir, sir, pull the mic down, no, no, pull the mic down and speak it right into the mic.
Weren't you my principal at Stokes?
Yeah. No.
You got lost.
Yeah, speak right into the mic.
You got lost short since then. A couple weeks ago, I was outside with my sister's children and our dog. And I heard my dog yelping and yelping. But I didn't, but then the kids started screaming. When I turned the corner, there was a bobcat pinching into the ground with his blood. Did you hear him on my phone? It had him pinned to the ground. And since they were, the kids were staying there, we, we didn't have any guns laying around.
Sir, we can't hear you at all. Either go, give the mic or... Yeah, just, just lean into the mic there, there you go. Lean into it, lean into it. There you go, there you go.
After everything that happened, I truly thought, in my car, I'm sorry, I don't.
But you had a bobcat bite your dog?
Yeah, it had him pinned to the ground, right in front of the kids.
Okay, I think you need to discuss that at another place, though. This is regarding the annexation of some property.
That property is right next to my house. Those power lines you put up.
What's your address?
355 East, 250 South.
Okay.
That bobcat never, ever showed up on our property, till you put those power lines up.
Okay, and your point is?
I don't know.
What?
You don't know.
Okay. Well...
That's three minutes, thank you, sir.
We appreciate you letting us know, thank you.
Okay, that concludes Resolution 2022-16. Next item is...
Don't forget your phone.
Next item is Ordinance 2022-19. Ben, can you give a quick review for everyone? And this ordinance is on second reading.
All right, I'll have to wake, wake the computer back up here real quick. So this is the 100% voluntary annexation of the 1,400 acres for the Project Leap project. And I will go back and find the map and make it a little smaller so we can all see it. Get a little bit smaller yet. So this is the map of the overall annexation area here, just to orient everybody again, State Road 32 is at the south end. Right here, kind of in the center here is where the Big Four Trail is, that's what that, that part is, that kind of sticks out here as part of the annexation area. There is US 52, I-65, 300 north, and then 450 is right at the north end of the annexation, up here at the north, railroad tracks are on, are running right through the east part of this here. So this is, again, as I mentioned, 100% voluntary annexation by all the property owners within the annexation territory. It's approximately 1,400 acres in terms of process, this has gone to the Plan Commission for a recommendation on zoning, and that does come to you with a recommendation for the general industrial zoning classification. We did have the first reading of the ordinance at the last meeting along with the required public hearing for annexation, and then this is for you here tonight for the second reading and potential consideration of the annexation ordinance. So that's a real quick recap, if there's anything specific you'd like me to address, I'd be happy to.
Any questions for Ben at this time?
Not right now.
Would the applicant like to say anything? Nope? Okay, good. Okay, we are not required to hold a public hearing on this, but I will have public comment tonight. Again, we would like to keep minutes or comments to about three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. So if you'd like to step forward and have public comments on Ordinance 2022-19, please step forward.
Brian Daggy, 2005 West, 250 North, Hazelwick Road, Lebanon, Indiana. Thank you for the opportunity to comment again tonight. We're here already again with the council facing a very important decision that's gonna have a large impact on the city of Lebanon and the county for generations to come. I, again, want to talk in terms of the zoning classification that you assign this annexation area. Actually, I think part of my point was actually made by one gentleman before, when they talk about the fiscal plan only applies to the 600 acres of the Lilly project. So the industrial classification that was requested for that, we'd sooner only want to follow that as well, at least I can make that argument, and I think it's a logical one. The ground on the west side of the interstate, 800 some acres approximately, that is also the under-annexation proposal tonight, does not have any prospects in mind, does not have any, other than just the general plan of having it developed as a tech park. I understand that. But by giving it the industrial zoning now, Lebanon's highest, most intensive use, it would seem to be like you're giving away your future control over how to have an impact on how that land gets used, and how it has impact on the other neighbors and neighborhoods that are adjacent to it. And in fact, having an impact on the property rights on the other people around there. And I know you take those seriously, but I request that you think very seriously how you want to zone that 800 acres. It does not appear to be necessary to do it as industrial at this point. It could be left at the current zoning, which is a mixed use, or a mixed variety of zoning on it now. You could always come back and rezone for more intensive use later when you know what that use may be proposed to be. It's also hard to back up from a heavy use in zoning like the industrial is, once you've given it. Again, I think you're tending to give up some control in that area. I really think a planned unit development for the 800 acres on the south side makes a lot of sense. I think it gives you more control over how you want to see that developed and how it goes along. I understand the I E D C wants to have input on that as well, but I think they'll be willing to work with you on that, as you move forward with it. And you can have some input from the residents, from other people in the county, and I think you have a better outcome in the long run. I really encourage you to look at that for the 800 acres west of the interstate. Once you remember, this is really the largest development project in Lebanon's history, far as I can tell. So the decisions you make tonight will carry a lot of weight for a long time. Please consider it very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment?
Good evening, my name is Tom Valbrick, 802 Dix Street here in Lebanon. And I want to comment on Mr. Robinson's questions earlier, and that is the road conditions out there. I work for senior services here in town and transport a lot of people on county roads in that area. 300 right now is really only access we have to the west to get to the Thorntown area. Yes, we can go up to 47 and all that, but I mean, I'm saying, we use a lot of those county roads. They're already in bad condition, I guarantee you. What's the construction traffic gonna do to those roads during this one, two, three-year period? After that, what's the traffic gonna do to that? The city did a study a year ago with the potential of the new interstate.
Four years ago.
Yeah, and of course, it was all around 300, 450. Just looking at the maps, I think 300 looks like it's the prime source. So what's that gonna do also? So, I mean, this consideration, Mr. Robinson talked about it, that the roads that are there now, who's going to maintain them? $38,000 extra into our budgets won't cover roads very far. Police and fire extras out there, so there's a lot of other considerations besides just swallowing up land to do a project, whether it's Lilly or anybody else, that this requires other needs, and sometimes those needs are not met on a given basis, and then everyone suffers eventually. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. For the public comment?
My name is Jim Love, I live at 3150 North, State Road 52. And as someone who finds themselves in the direct crosshairs of this project, as well as someone who has been involved in agriculture my entire life at that location, I think there's some things that we need to think about. When we think about agriculture in the state of Indiana, it's very, very easy to say, it's just a farm field, it's just a farm field. We hear that all the time. But it's just a farm field is there's only so many just farm fields when you think about it. You also need to think about this as you're trying to decide how you're gonna zone this land is, that the owners of those fields are oftentimes not the person who operates those. Years ago, that was very common, that the operator was the owner, but now there are lots of absentee owners. A big chunk of this land that you guys are going to annex is an absentee owner, and they don't care whether that land's farmed or not farmed, it has no interest to them, it is just merely an investment. Absentee owners don't do the things in this community that farmers do when they have the opportunity to farm this ground. So farmers go to local banks, buy equipment, and without the farmland to service that, for that equipment to run across, there's no way to service a debt at the Home National Bank, or service a debt at the Farmer's Bank where you do business and you talk to the tellers and you do business with those people's names. How about buy fuel, supplies? How about hardware stores? Who keeps Gilman's going? Construction people, farmers, people that are doing business within the community. Is Eli Lilly gonna do business within the community? Is a battery factory gonna do business within the community? Likely not, but your farmers are, that's who's buying stuff at those places now. How about buy insurance? Your farmers are gonna insure their equipment. So there's lots of tentacles that go very deep into the community that this ag land takes care of. You know, I hear the term underutilized and barren land. Underutilized and barren land. As somebody who's farmed here for the majority of my life, I found that to be extremely offensive term, because if you'd like to come and see our underutilized and barren land right now, I would love to let you walk through a six-foot crop of corn at 95 degrees, and you would find it's fairly well utilized, and it's not very barren, and you will sweat like crazy. On our farm alone, we grow corn and soybeans, and we have some livestock. Now, I also hear this term, and this is laughable as well, we hear people talk about, we don't grow food in Indiana, we just grow corn and soybeans. And, and so you hear that a lot, as a farmer, I hear that a lot, I work in the ag industry, and we hear that. Keep in mind that in Indiana, we are one of the most prosperous farm states in the United States. That is why you hear people talk about the I states. There was someone who the other day said, oh, Indiana's behind, Ohio and Illinois are far ahead of them. When people talk about prosperous states in the United States, they will always talk about the I states. Those are Indiana, Illinois, and Iowa, and this is some of the best ground that the United States has to offer, both from a growing conditions, infrastructure conditions, manufacturing, because a lot of our corn does go into corn syrup and things, we even have a nice array of ethanol plants now. So the infrastructure is here, this is a great place to be involved in agriculture. So underutilized...
Just three minutes, let me wrap up.
Pardon?
Three minutes, let me wrap up.
Oh, so underutilized and barren is not necessarily the case. When you look at the pressure on worldwide agriculture right now, look no further than the Netherlands, this problem's taking place, they're, they're taking land out of production, and people have problems. For those of you who knew Bob Gurnsey, Bob Gurnsey was a wise guy that I didn't always agree with, but I could respect, and he said, once the camel gets its nose under the tent, it's mighty hard to get that camel stopped. And when we re-annex some of these agriculture lands for things that are not yet slated, it may come back to haunt us because we will struggle to get them back into our control. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, everyone. My name is Corbin James Renout, and I live at 5125 North, 150 West, Lebanon. My parents are Ryan and Danielle. I know I'm just a kid, but I speak for my family, my friends, both grownups and kids. And my neighbors who are here tonight, they are great people. I just really want you to listen to us when we tell you that, we beg you to slow this down. Something's not right, and we, we all can feel it. If this, if this happens, we will never, there will never be a way to change it back to farmland. Faith, family, and farming are what, what this farmland, and farming areas is what this area is made of. We are scared, we love our home, we love our town, we love all of our farmers, and we love this area just exactly how it is. And these big companies come and they will ruin the whole area forever. I beg that you sake of all of us, please do not let this, at least not yet. Do it for me, do it for all the kids, do it for all of these good people. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Good evening, everyone, thank you for giving us time to speak at the second reading.
Joyce, I know, we all know you, but can you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Joyce Douglas, 409 North Meridian Street. Lilly's a $22.9 billion company, Fortune 500. So the state and the I E D C came in, came through our area. There's lack of new build happening in Indiana because they need water, and the water sources are Tays, Aquifer in Lafayette, or Whitestown, or somewhere else, and they need our area. Is this right to come into our area? Of course, we want growth, but we want proper growth. I came to Lebanon because of the rural quality, we chose Lebanon over some of the other areas surrounding Indiana because of the rural quality. The farmer's farm, and it's the most devout generational land you will ever see. And if you make this change, it will be a change forever. It's a hamster wheel with the money that they were discussing earlier, because what happens is the state takes the 88%, we get the 12%, they come through, they use our services, they use our city, and it goes right back to the state. When I say they use our services, I'm talking about capital and non-capital expenses. Those are very expensive. I don't know if you can see this, but our utilities, our utilities will, will be stressed to the maximum, and it'll be estimated... And it'll be estimated by Lebanon Utilities, $55 million for the source of water and all the additional capital improvements that need to be done. And mayor and attorney and all you city councilmen can say, "Well, the state will pay for it. Lilly will pay for it." You know, in year 2023, in year 2024 and beyond, we'll be paying for it. So I want you to think long and hard about this. Your fiscal plan lacked a lot of the details that are needed for hiring, the capital and non-capital expenses like fire, police, EMTs, road maintenance. I mean, I really want you to think about that. And think about that figure that he said, $38,000. Mike Kincaid, that was an excellent question. And all of you that interjected, Dick, you had good comments there. And so I hope you really think about this project on a whole. Who is it really for? Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Further public comment?
Good evening. My name is Burt Reese. I live at 6519 North, 350 West. So this evening, I want to make something very clear to the council, but also to the IEDC. This is a topic that I can speak about as an expert more than any politician or any economic group, and that's the brain drain. And the reason I can talk about that is because my husband and I are the commodity in that game. So my undergraduate degree is from Rose Holman Institute of Technology. My grad degree is from Purdue, and I've got two certificates from Cornell. My nerdy engineer product management husband back there, so both his undergraduate and graduate degrees are from Rose Holman. So over the last 15 years, we have seen a mass exodus of our friends and our classmates in science and engineering from Indiana. A handful have stayed, and a few decided to come back after their adventure. We stayed. These decisions were not based on lack of jobs or lack of pay. Pay is irrelevant anyways. People keep forgetting to put this into the conversation, because the cost of living in Indiana is really cheap in comparison. So the decisions to stay have been based on two things, and that's lifestyle and family. That is why we're here. We moved here 15 years ago. I am from a rural part of Indiana, more rural and isolated than Boone County. My husband's family farms in Miami County. We moved here because of the lifestyle and surroundings that were like those we grew up in. We stayed in Indiana because of family. All along the I-65 corridor between Lafayette and Indianapolis, you'll find others just like us who moved to this area for that same reason. Our friends and classmates did not leave because of jobs or pay. They left because they were seeking a different lifestyle, other than what the Midwest could offer. They moved to places like Arizona, California, Colorado. My brother and sister-in-law, both Rose Holman graduates, so after they graduated, they moved to Arizona. But they came back. They came back to Indiana. Why? Because they had my nephew, and they wanted to raise my nephew, their children, in the Midwest and be close to family. So we've thought about leaving many times. But what has kept us here is our rural lifestyle and our family. If we want to, we could pack up, get all our things, and move to one of these brain game states with no worry about finances or employment. However, not everyone has that luxury. There are a vast variety of reasons why people can't or don't want to leave. The project and others like it leave a path of destruction. It destroys the quality of life and what some have worked their lives for. It destroys what gives us our identity. It destroys what has kept those who have stayed. The state is trying to plug a hole with Square Peg. Those who left or will leave, they're still going to leave the quietest of an IDD. They're seeking something different in life. Lilly won't make a difference either. I know many of friends, Rose graduates, they worked at Lilly in Indianapolis. Guess what? They left. They wanted a different lifestyle.
Three minutes, man.
The project's not helping the people of Boone County are improving our lifestyle. If they really had the best interests of our community and citizens' mind, they would be causing, fixing this at the start with our public schools and universities. At the end of the day, this project will only benefit the corporations with their tax cuts and the politicians, all while bringing in external talent to fill the job openings. The local community becomes displaced and disregarded in the eyes of corporate and political greed and viewed as less than. Regardless of legality, I want you to reflect on morality. What is right just immoral about putting the gains of corporate America ahead of community, family, foundational identity that makes us Lebanon, Boone County, and the heart of America? Thank you.
Jonathan Hoffman, 1522 Austin Drive. Appreciate everybody's time.
You can pull that up, too. I know you're there.
Yeah, there you go. How's that? Good? All right. Thank you, everybody, for your time. I support the annexation as a local business owner. I have a few different opportunities here in town. I live here in town. I want to spend my money in town. I want other people to spend their money in town. You know, with the Lilly annexation getting built, I can certainly understand that the tax money coming from that annexation might not come to us. $36,000 isn't a lot. But every single one of those people that eat here, that shop here, that's extra money that does get to come to us, because even though we might not get the state sales tax, the profits from that do get reinvested back into our community by business owners like myself. And we also get that food and beverage tax as well. So the little bit extra money, it might not be a lot, it does help offset some of those costs. And I come from a big city. I'm from South Bend, Indiana, and moved here back in 2010. I have enjoyed the smaller-town feel. I like living 20 minutes from Indianapolis, because it's close enough to, you know, get my shopping done if I need to go to the mall or something. But it is far enough away from traffic that I don't have to deal with that every day. That said, having to commute to work for one of the high-dollar jobs that's coming to the area, it's a pain in the butt, having to drive 45 minutes to Roche, you know, to work over there, or to drive downtown to work for a consulting company. You know, having a higher-paying job available here for someone like myself is very nice. You know, a good opportunity for locals that, you know, while there may not be people here that qualify for those jobs, or we feel they may not, you know, that could attract more people that do qualify for those jobs and make them want to live in Lebanon, because they don't have to drive to Lafayette or have to drive to Indianapolis. So that's all I have, and thank you guys very much.
Thank you for comments.
Good evening, again. Stuart Shaw Walker, 18 West Main. And I just want you to know, I do support the annexation. Again, the development is going to happen. I like the idea of what's planned for it. Let's get our city in place to accept what's going to happen. Let's get our zoning going. And I don't think we're going to starve if we take a few more acres of farmland, which in the largest context are ecological disaster areas, and turn them into a more productive use. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Any additional public comment?
Dan Bayshore, 827 Foxglove Court, Lebanon, Indiana. Full disclosure, I'm on the planning commission. I took that job voluntarily for things just like this. So I've been a resident citizen of Lebanon for 25 years, raising my family here. I see this annexation as, how should I say this? There's going to be some good, there's going to be some bad, there's going to be things that are necessary, there's going to be things that may not be so necessary. We all knew this was coming. We can't really deny that. I mean, we're at the intersection of I-65, US-52, and two state roads. I mean, it's going to come, no matter what we did. I mean, we didn't want it in our backyard, but that's what it is. One thing is, I've heard a lot in the last two months, I've been, some of the council meetings, I'm on the planning commission, I've seen a lot of things, but I haven't seen any alternate growth solutions presented to anybody. All I've seen is just stop what we got now. And doing that's not good. It's stagnation. It's not growth. It's not what society does. Society grows, no matter what we do. I understand, you're talking 80%, I believe, if not more, of the farmland that's getting annexed right now, is some of the most prime farmland in the state. I get that. My father-in-law's a crop consultant. He reiterated that to me. I asked him quite a few questions about it. I come to the conclusion, though, that what we're putting in here, the innovation and research park, it's got a lot of potential. It could solve the problem of losses of the cropland. Higher yields, we could end up being able to produce what we need to produce to feed ourselves in the next 30 years. So I'd like, if we have to do this, it's going to be, had to be done right. Excuse me a second here. Had quite a bit of notes. I mean, you see from the local area around Lebanon, whether it's here in town, local area, many of the problems we are going to have now or in the future, in the country, in the state, whatever, I mean, things can be solved in the research innovation park. It's possible. We've got things we could solve problems with health, ag industry, food supply chain, energy, et cetera, things like that. What we've seen is the city can inform us when they're asked to inform us. I'll be one to say that it's been hard to get information sometimes. They seem to be wanting to get it out there now. I suggest that all of you continue to do that expediently. Every time we get that information, make it easily accessible to us. It will be a lot easier, especially as this development goes forward, if it does. The other thing I'd like to say, actually, involves the city and involves me a little bit, it's the, when we go through the things of our economic development and our future comprehensive plan, keep in mind there's some things we should start using, like the land evaluation site assessment systems.
Three minutes, man. You're wrapping up, about three minutes.
All right. And we should develop this land smartly, using that and putting in that development plan. The county needs to do it to a greater extent, to the owners of that generational land that everybody's out here talking about, to be listening to them, and they need to inform them of something called the Agricultural Conservation Ease Program. It lets the eligible agricultural property owners of Boone County protect their lands from the developers if they choose to. What I'm seeking now is responsible, well-thought-out growth with the circumstances that we've been given.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments?
My name is James Heine, and I live at 4520 West 300 North in Lebanon. We're going to, I'm going to hopefully do a little tag team here, because three minutes is kind of a short deadline for me to get a lot of thoughts out. So I'm going to do my best here, and then maybe turn it over to my wife here, my beautiful wife here. First of all, I live close to Hazel Ridge. A lot of people in here probably do as well. We've lived there about five years, 15 years prior to that, downtown Lebanon. My family, we started hearing these rumors around Christmas 2021. There's some kind of developer coming in. Is this true? Is it not true? People are being reached out to, neighbors. There's no information, nothing, nothing. All of it's a mystery. We want to, so we went out and tried to get as much information as we could as a family. We're asking our neighbors, people are asking us. I don't know what's going on. This mysterious developer is out there. So we're going to meetings and different things, just trying to get some information out here, because we want to protect our property. We want to live there. We want to have our families be there. We're responsible for my family, my property, the wildlife there, my pond with my fish in it, a 200-year-old maple tree. So we're concerned. This is happening, you know, way back at Christmas time. So why is Mayor Gentry talking about not knowing anything until March 1st?
So that's the truth.
Do you expect everyone to believe that?
You should, yes.
Okay. Okay. So there is no planning going on ahead of time that the public would have been aware of?
Not that I was aware of.
Mr. Bontrager, Lebanon's director of planning, used to work with the IEDC. Presumably, he has some connections. And we've all read about Mike Gentry, how he's politically connected. And this is Mayor Gentry's dad. So we started to think about, well, where's the transparency going on here?
Sir, please, he comes to the ordinance.
Okay. Mike.
That's three minutes, by the way.
Mike Gentry, executive director of the Indiana House Republican Campaign Committee, raising, a PAC raising at $1.85 million last year, 450 going to the Republican Party here in Indiana, and the rest of it going to, well, 185,000, excuse me.
He also hasn't worked there in 12 years, but keep going.
Going to Red LLC, and of which Mike and Matt Gentry are partners. So that's a lot to unpack, I understand that. Basically, it comes down to how much do people really know ahead of time, and how rushed are these decisions going to be made? When we're out there finding, just for the four of us and my family, my property, to find information, that Mayor Gentry is responsible for 17,000 people in Lebanon, providing them with the information that we need to hopefully make these kinds of decisions and keep the public informed so that we are moving forward. I'm going to pass the mic over at this point.
So I'm Tracy Heine, same address. We have concerns, right? A lot of things just don't add up. And I know we're talking about 1,400 acres tonight, but the whole grand project is 10,000, and I don't think we can talk about one without the other. Thank you. So generally speaking, I just, I want people to have an idea of what 10,000 acres is, because it's really not tangible, I think, to a lot of people. Lebanon is 11,000 acres, but where are those boundaries, right? Anson is 1,700 acres, and that's all of Anson, houses, apartments, retail, commercial, including Amazon, 1,700 acres. So we're talking over five times that for the whole project. IU is 2,000 acres, so five times that. Purdue, 2,500 acres, four times that. So what is 10,000 acres that we can visualize? It took me a while to try and find something tangible. If you take 65, 465 to the south, 334 to the north, if you go to 421, that rectangle is 5,500 acres. You have to get all the way over to 31 to get to 10,000 acres.
Six minutes.
I also, you took some of his time, so just give me a minute. I also have been asking a lot for data, right? We all like data. And I made a little poll on Facebook, not scientifically valid, I know, but the conversation needed to be opened. And what happened was I got made fun of, actually. I'll read real quick. Mayor Gentry says, "Any freshman political science major would be quick to point out a self-selected survey within a non-representative subset of the population is not a representative sample of the entire population. Not to mention, the voting results are public and would have an impact on affirmative position." an impact on affirmative position in any opposition group." Absolutely. I know it wasn't scientific, but I do think that people in Lebanon deserve to have their voice heard, and I really have a question as to why we don't want to have that data, you know? Why can't we, why can't we do that?
Seven minutes.
Okay. And one other thing, I know you guys have a big responsibility. I, I looked, you know, what your role is up online, and, and, goodness, sorry, I've crossed through a lot because I went from five minutes to three minutes. Largely, a super simplification of the role, which I do respect. One, represent your residents. Two, make sure municipal services are A-OK. I've seen two or three people now who are in favor, so I'm really curious who the residents are, if you choose to approve this, where they are. And then, we don't know the municipal services, like, what's the plan? I just don't know how it all gets approved. So, my heart does go out to you. It's a big decision, but I don't understand why they're such a rush and why we can't really find out what people here want. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Further public comment?
Howard Galvin, 1021 Lafayette Avenue. I just took my little walk out there, and I seen a sign down there that says, "Welcome home," or "Your home," something. Shouldn't we keep this our home instead of, you know what I'm saying? Just, it meant something to me, says, "Your home. Let's keep it our home." Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Further comments?
Hi, I'm Jeanette Cook. I live at 2,400 North, 500 West, and all I'd like to do is pass these out for all of you guys to read.
Further public comment?
I'm Darren McGovern, 3325 West 400 North. I live in the country, not the city. And it's kind of ironic, we find ourselves in here a week after Independence Day. And you see the beautiful flag back there. I just wanted to read this one, one beautiful thing real quick. "When the course of human events becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another." So, there was this thing I had to do when I raised my hand, because I went to the military. And within that process, we found ourselves one night sitting in our bunks, and they were like, "Hey, you don't have any integrity. Here's what you're gonna do. Write the word integrity 100 times and write the definition 100, 100 times." Phew, excuse me. Well, with that, as you write it and you start to think about it, integrity, doing the right thing when nobody is looking. So, there's a lot of people looking right now. What are you doing when no one else is looking, though? Do you have integrity? Or do you not? Do you open your mouth and say what has been said behind closed doors, or do you keep it quiet and then, all of a sudden, here it comes? So, a lot of it comes down to integrity, but I'm not you to decide. Have a great evening.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional public comment?
Good evening. My name's Brandy Albee. I live at 1379 West 300 North. I come before you not as a lifelong Lebanon resident, but I chose to live in Lebanon, my husband and I. I've been coaches to probably some of your kids, volleyball. I've been neighbors to some of you as well. My child has been teammates to some of your children in sports. My point is, is that I chose Lebanon. And I grew up on a family farm. I actually work in the pharmaceutical industry. But I did not want to raise my kids in Indianapolis or Lafayette. I chose Lebanon. And why did I choose Lebanon? Class sizes, right? I wanted my kids to have the opportunities that they would not have at a big school. So, what's gonna happen when we bring in these jobs? I keep hearing that this stuff is gonna be like the Research Triangle, right? So, have we done research? Do we know what the population of the Research Triangle is? North Carolina, second most populated city in the Carolinas. Is that what we want for Lebanon? Do we want Lebanon to be the second most populated city in Indiana? What's our schools gonna look like, then? What opportunities are your children gonna have, right? We're naive if we think we're just gonna be bringing in the good people, the good workers. It's not gonna happen. I did not want to raise my children that way, right? And I know a lot of you here on this council do not want your grandkids and your kids that same way. That's why you chose to live in Lebanon. You are not just bringing in one company. You are opening the floodgates. Do not think that just the good comes with it. There's going to be bad things that come with it, too, right? Everyone on 300 North, you can say that our houses haven't been taken. Our houses have not been taken yet. That's what the hard truth is. I have not got my letter yet. Structure Point was out at my house, three long hours, measuring every tree, my deck, you name it, they measured it. I have a senior. I can only cross my fingers and pray to God that she gets to hopefully finish out her senior year before this whole project ruins things. You're ruining lives. Put a face with this. I'm one of many on 300 North, one of many. Okay? So, I just want you to be aware, it's not all rainbows and sunshine. It's not. There's good, there's bad, there's ugly. So, we're not just creating good things here, people. You are reinventing Lebanon. Why? Why do we need to reinvent things? There are people, again, I worked in the pharmaceutical industry. I chose Lebanon. Do you think Anderson thought, "Hey, we're investing in this new technology"? It's never gonna go away. What happened to the factories in Anderson? What happened to the factories in Kokomo? Again, pharmaceuticals, drugs go down, they sell the branches. You are not always gonna be working with Eli Lilly down the road in Lebanon. They're gonna sell it. They could sell it. It's gonna happen. That's all I have to say.
Hi, Jennifer Fields, 1102 West 300 North. I'm a little nervous. I'm not a public speaker. I've sat at all these three meetings now and reserved comments. My family, along with my personal property, we have 180 acres on 300 North. Fortunately, or unfortunately, we have not been selected with an offer. I was happy about that at the beginning, and now after seeing all the things that are happening, I'm afraid that we will be like the others on 300 and not have anything left. I'm born and raised Lebanon native. I moved back here four years ago to build on our family property. I myself had to attend a meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission to take out special exception on property that my family already owned and paid fees to take my four acres out of 120 acres. My name was already on, and had to get certified letters and such and turn all those cards in for planning and zoning. I did not receive a certified nor regular mail letter, nor did my family, any of the members on the land. For the annexation, had I not been on social media, I would not have known about it. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. I just want to speak on a couple of the comments. One from Ben Tonight saying about the Lilly, if all the traffic is coming off the interstate, then I'm questioning, where were all these local jobs that were promised that are going to be at Lilly? Because if the traffic's come off the interstate, then those people are not living in Boone County. Like we've all said before, those jobs are not going to come from Lebanon citizens. One of Kent Franzen's comments in the very first meeting I sat in was, "The affluent people from Lilly," you can look back at the meeting, and that was one of the terms he used, "that the affluent people will, from Lilly would move here, plant roots, put their people in school." So, I want all of you to think about the type of community you're asking for, because apparently, the people of Lebanon are not good enough for those that want this annexation, and we only want the affluent people here. That's all my comments. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alan Moore. I live at 7015 North Caldwell Road. I appreciate you all taking the time to give public the time to comment. We've talked about Eli Lilly coming in. This is only one company of potentially many more. Eli Lilly is a great company, great Indiana company. We have no doubt about that. It's been here since the 1870s. But let's make it clear that we are talking about manufacturing. Eli, manufacturing, and how long does manufacturing plants last? We've all talked about four or five years. I'm talking about 50 to 100 years. You all had a copy of these in your pamphlets and your, that I gave to you last meeting. I want everybody else to see, this is a graph of S&amp;P 500 companies. This is 65 years at present. It's 21 years. That's the average life S&amp;P 500 company. Okay, how long are manufacturing sites good for? You know, are they gonna be 50 years? 100 years? I challenge anybody in here to show me or tell me of a manufacturing building that is still in operation and functioning 100 years ago. So, what are they gonna look like in 50 or 100 years? I can kind of tell you. You just think about steel processing and gears. We had a guy from South Bend. You look at the west side of South Bend, there's one building after another that is dilapidated. Don't go away near Anderson. You can look on the internet. They have many, they have 20 plants in, in, in Anderson, and now they have zero, and they're having trouble finding those manufacturing sites to be reused. But I really think we need to, and I would hope that the IEDC finds these sites that need to be recycled. Agricultural, it will be here for centuries to come. Along the Chesapeake Bay Hula Farms is farming land that has been in production since 1609, 613 years. Agricultural land will be in production for centuries to come. So, I think we need to look a little bit farther down the road than four or five years. Do you have any questions? I'd be glad to answer any. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Further public comment?
Greetings all. My name's James Borman. I live at 6712 North Caldwell Road in Lebanon. I moved my family here about 10 years ago. We chose Boone County, rural Boone County, because we liked it here. Does anybody else like it here? The whole idea of preserving Boone County is because we like it here. Doesn't anybody else like it here? Isn't there enough industry like this in Indianapolis, in Lafayette, in Kokomo, some of the, some of the other shut-down manufacturing sites? Why can't we use any of that? I mean, seriously, what are we doing here? Now, some people told me that you guys are just gonna rubber-stamp this, that I'm just wasting my time coming up here to talk. I hope that's not the case. I ask each and every one of you to do your due diligence. Do your job. Look at what we're doing here. Think about it. Boone County is a great place to live right now, and it's not gonna be if we make all this heavy industry. For crying out loud, what are we doing? I don't want to move. We planted roots here in the last 10 years. We love it here. I'm not gonna love it anymore if we get heavy industry. Nobody's talking about the environmental impact, about pollution. I don't hear any of that. What are we doing? Is anybody thinking about this? Is anybody looking into it? Are there any questions? Why are we rushing this process like we are? I mean, I don't have to give any of you guys, I hope, a lesson in government and executive versus legislative branch. Just, for God's sake, don't be a rubber stamp and do your due diligence. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Further comments? Additional public comment?
Honorable Mayor Gentry, Council. My name's Steve Winning. I live at 3265 North 25 East, which is outside the area where all this is taking place, but I do live just outside Lebanon proper. 30 years ago, when my wife and I moved here from Carville, excuse me, we were told by our realtor, "Don't worry. Within a few years, you'll be within Lebanon." We love our rural area, but we also love Lebanon, so we weren't really worried about that. And over the years, we've been pretty happy with, from afar, the decisions you've been making. It's been prudent. And I look at Eli Lilly, and it's like, who wouldn't want to say Eli Lilly's one of our companies? But I look at the geography, as someone else pointed out earlier, and it's like, you are sitting on a gold mine. This is the intersection halfway between Lafayette and Indianapolis. And when you're talking about some of the zoning classifications, it's like, yeah, I, I agree. You guys need to be in control. Don't say, "You all come." Say, "We like you. Please come." But on the other hand, there's a lot of homes that are being affected. You know, I'm outside the area, so I'm kind of looking at this with interest on, well, what happens if something comes out to my area? How do you respect the homeowners? You know, some of these people are gonna have to give up a little more of their property just to widen the road so that, you know, they can be upgraded. You know, are you giving proper information ahead of time? You know, there's little tweaks that can be made, and it's like, I just hope that you don't rush it. I've worked with legislative processes before. You don't have to always take a vote right away. You can say, "Next meeting, we're gonna do a few little tweaks, and we're gonna get it just the way we want it." And as a person living just outside, that's what I'm hoping to see, so that I can say, "Yeah, if like my realtor said, you're coming out my way, I have confidence that you're doing it the proper way." But also, I'm looking at these people who have their homes, and I want to make sure that they're informed of what's going on. They, you know, that you give them a plan of where things are going so they can plan for their futures, too. So, that's all I'm asking, is take your time, do it right, and make us all proud. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Further public comment?
My name is Linda Farenbach, and I live at 5405 North 150 West. My main concern is about the traffic, the congestion that there'll be, and the traffic north of the project, because all the construction, all the traffic, all the workers will be coming down our road, and the peacefulness of that road will be gone. It'll be like a highway. And my request is that you would talk to us in that area and ask for suggestions of what to do about the road or different ideas, like I would suggest a fronted road, so that it would avoid all the local residents, that so that we don't have to have all the dump trucks and the construction coming in and down our road. I would like to not see the area annexed, but, and I would like you to delay the vote, and I'd also like you to ask the citizens- And I'd also like you to ask the citizens in the area how they could put input into what's going on and how to do things. I thank you for your comment, or for, I thank you for listening and allowing me to comment. Thank you.
Make your comments. Anyone else? Okay. Rob, can we actually read the ordinance second reading, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Council Ordinance 2022-19 again concerns an ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Lebanon. Whereas the owners of approximately 1,400 acres, a land in unincorporated Boone County but contiguous to the city and what's defined as the LEAP annexation area, have petition to have their land voluntarily annexed into the city of Lebanon. Whereas this council is legally authorized to annex lands that qualify for annexation as defined in Indiana Code and is desirous of approving the annexation of the LEAP annexation area. Whereas the LEAP annexation area is a transformational economic development opportunity for the state of Indiana, Boone County and the city, having already attracted an anticipated $2.1 billion investment from Eli Lilly for construction and operation of a new manufacturing and research and development facilities within the LEAP annexation area, and with other yet secured, other not yet secured but anticipated uses for other land within the LEAP annexation area. Whereas the council supports the proposed development and the use of the LEAP annexation area in order to attract and support new business investment with a focus on attracting advanced manufacturing, agri-science, bioscience, and other economy of the future businesses that will yield a diversified tax base and high-paying job opportunities for local residents. Whereas the LEAP annexation area consists of 56 separate parcels containing a total of approximately 1,400 acres owned by 32 landowners, not including adjacent public roadways. The LEAP annexation areas identified in Exhibits A and B. Whereas this council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising the LEAP annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with the council under the Indiana Code. Whereas the LEAP annexation area does not include any parcel land for which its owners have not filed and expressed written consent to this annexation. Whereas for the sake of clarity, the LEAP annexation area does not include three separate parcels of land that are surrounded by the LEAP annexation areas referenced in Exhibit B and depicted on Exhibit A. Whereas as authorized by Section 1.8B of the city's Unified Development Ordinance, the council has received and considered a development proposal, concept plan, which provides sufficient information about the intended development and use of the LEAP annexation area to justify the assignment of a general industrial ID zoning classification to the annexation area. Whereas the city Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held a duly and timely notice public hearing regarding a recommended zoning classification for the proposed annexation area at its meeting scheduled on June 21, 2022. It forwarded Docet 22-44 to this council with a favorable recommendation to assign a general industrial ID zoning classification for the LEAP annexation area, subject to certain permitted or conditional uses to be voluntarily excluded and prohibited. Whereas in accordance with the Indiana Code, on June 27, 2022, this council held a duly and timely notice public hearing regarding the petition for annexation of the LEAP annexation area. Whereas this council has adopted a fiscal plan for the annexation of the LEAP annexation area in accordance with the Indiana Code, and that was in Resolution 2022-16. Whereas this council has determined, after due consideration, that this annexation satisfies the contingency requirements of the Indiana Code, as shown particularly in Exhibit C attached here too. Whereas parts of the LEAP annexation area are contiguous to public roadways and rightsways, and under the Indiana Code, those portions of such roadways and rightsways are to be annexed to the city. Whereas this council has considered a statutory criteria for annexation and finds that the legal process and the requirements for this super voluntary annexation have been satisfied. Now therefore, this council meeting at its regular session defines as follows. The foregoing recitals are found to be accurate and incorporated by reference. The annexation area, the LEAP annexation area generally located on the north and west sides of the city, on both sides of Interstate 65, as depicted in Exhibits A and more particularly described in Exhibit B, is eligible for annexation into the city and hereby declared annexed into and part of the city of Lebanon. Section 3 Contiguity. The LEAP annexation area meets the contingency requirements for annexation under the Indiana Code. At least one-eighth of the external boundaries of the LEAP annexation area coincides with and joins existing city boundaries. See the contingency calculation when we attach Exhibit A and certification on Exhibit C, all incorporated by reference. Further, the LEAP annexation area consists of multiple parcels that form a single unified territory. The LEAP annexation areas to further include the contiguous public highways and rightsways of the public highways which are adjacent to the LEAP annexation area per Indiana Code. Section 4 Council District. The LEAP annexation area is hereby assigned Council Districts 2 and 3 and shall become a part thereof immediately upon effective date of this ordinance. Section 5 Zoning. Upon the recommendation of the Plan Commission, the LEAP annexation area is hereby assigned a general industrial ID zoning classification. However, the LEAP annexation area will not accommodate all uses allowed under the ID zoning classification. Those predominant uses identified on Exhibit D are excluded and prohibited from the LEAP annexation area, except upon the city's approval of a petition for rezoning, variance, waiver, or special exceptions, in accordance with the laws of Indiana and Unified Development Ordinance. Section 6 The Effective Date. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage by this council, required publications and plans, and upon expiration of the applicable 30-day waiting period, all as provided by the laws of the state of Indiana.
Thank you, Rob. Ordinance meeting around second reading. City Council discussion.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. I know it's very emotional and most emotional project I've ever been involved with. I've been up here 14 years. But just a couple of things to unpack, you know, regarding the water. All said and done, when the water comes, additional water comes in from the Lafayette or the Clinton County area, it does resolve Lebanon's water problems for the foreseeable future. So that, that kind of goes away after this all gets completed, if it does. Now, I do believe that there are some weaknesses in that fiscal plan. I mean, I don't like it when the roads are only going to cost a little bit of money when I know that over a period of time, they're going to cost a lot of money. And I think that that needs to be part of a plan for something this big. Most time, it's just a small area, but this is so big that, you know, there's going to be so many unforeseen things. You can't foresee everything. But what I hear is people believe that there should be more information. So that's what I'm, I'm hearing. So I'm just responding to what I'm hearing. You know, the, the benefit of having Eli Lilly here, we all believe is going to be But what if they don't? And then this council goes away, and 25 years is another council, and the rules change, and now they put something else out there that may not be as good. So something like that could happen also. You know, and attacking somebody's integrity, I mean, I don't think this was a place for that. You know?
The mayor's not transparent.
You know, I've lived here for 68 years, so, you know, I just did not appreciate that. Because you're making it, you're implying something that no one knows anything about. Maybe it's happened, maybe it didn't. I don't know. But it's just a wrong place to bring it up and start things like that. Now, I've got that out of my system. I am concerned about the environmental impact. I think it needs to be, needs to be researched a little bit more so that it satisfies some questions. I'm bringing my, I'm bringing my, bringing up questions so trying to satisfy everybody else's questions. So I think, you know, a little more information regarding the impact on the environment. A little more information on the road. I mean, like, somebody brought up the road construction. I mean, the construction, you know, the traffic's coming in and so forth. You know, that needs to be resolved before anything happens, in my opinion. This is, so some of these questions are answered. So that's my comment so far. I, I would, I would say that we table it and put a little more time into answering those questions.
Mike, I understand those concerns.
For that, it's just the fact that, you know, if people have questions, we should take a little more time.
So, Mike, I understand those concerns that you're bringing forward. I mean, this council does not have oversight over environmental concerns, right? That's strictly a IDIM situation, right? And EPA, right? There are different levels of government that oversee that, right? That is not something that we do from a city perspective. Ben, do you want to touch on maybe the, how the road evaluation is done through the planning process? Because again, tonight, we're not talking about the site plan. We're specifically talking about the annexation of the site, even bringing it with under city jurisdiction, right? Without annexation, we don't have any jurisdiction to oversee any site plans because it's not in the city. We don't have a two-mile planning jurisdiction like other committees have. It, our, our planning jurisdiction stops at city boundaries. For us to have those conversations about that, it has to be within the city. Ben, you want to add anything?
Yeah, just to highlight a couple of things there, yeah, in terms of process. So annexation is the first step in a multi-step process where we're going to identify all these things and get them all determined and how they need to be accommodated. So in terms of traffic and infrastructure, that's part of the development planning phase once we understand what, what it is that's going to be constructed on the site, how it's going to impact our road system. They'll do a traffic impact analysis to figure out which, which roads people are going to take and how they're going to get there to the site. And then we can understand, okay, how big does 300 North need to be in order to accommodate traffic? What does that interchange need to look like in order to accommodate the traffic? Those are all part of that development planning process that we, we will go through once it's annexed. As the mayor said, it's not in our jurisdiction right now really to oversee those things until the point where we have the detailed information as part of that development plan to do that. And that development planning process starts once the annexation is complete. In terms of Eli Lilly, until they know that it's in the city and they're in our planning jurisdiction, they don't even know what standards to develop to. Is it going to be developed in the county's jurisdiction or in the city's jurisdiction? Our standards are different. So to go to the expense to develop specific and detailed plans before you have an understanding of what jurisdiction you're in, that's an awful costly endeavor to go through until you know which jurisdiction you're in and moving forward. But we certainly understand there's going to be an impact on the road system, and they're going to need to be upgraded and repaired. Those are all discussions that are all being had, and everybody understands. The other thing to point out is that all new development in the city of Lebanon, now that we have a road impact fee in place, will pay their fair share in terms of the costs that they, that they incur to the road system. So Eli Lilly is going to pay a very sizable road impact fee based on the number of trips that are calculated there, and that's, that's to offset some of those costs as well. So we have things in place to help address these things. And certainly from the environmental perspective, totally understand those, that again, is the jurisdiction of those, the state and federal agencies, and they have rules in place in terms of how you use certain products, what you can put into the systems. Lebanon Utilities does have the ability to monitor and understand what's going into their systems as well to make sure that a certain entity is not placing things in their system that they can't handle at the wastewater treatment plant. So there are a lot of, a lot of things in place that regulate and oversee those things. So in, in terms of moving forward, I do expect if the annexation is, is adopted, Eli Lilly will immediately begin preparing that development plan, and will have more information as quickly as possible once the annexation is effective and they understand which standards that they're, they're going to have to apply to the site. And in terms of, one thing I did not highlight initially, and I should have, in terms of control over what happens in the future, yes, we are looking to annex this and place the ID zoning district on it. ID zoning district has a series of uses that are permitted. In that zoning district, we have created a very lengthy list of uses that are typically permitted in that zoning district that would not be permitted in this annexation area. It's about a page and a half long, so probably 75 to 80% of the uses that are typically permitted in ID will not be permitted here. We wanted to be intentionally very narrowly focused on the types of users and uses that could go in this, in this annexation area for the exact purpose of trying to attain the goals that the state and the city has in terms of the type of users we want to accommodate in this area. So we actually have more control as part of this annexation on what happens in this area than, and any other development project we've ever done because of those uses that are excluded. Most of those uses were, were and are permitted in the, in the existing Lebanon Business Park. And, and so again, we have more control in this annexation area than we have ever had in any sort of industrial development project like this previously. And I, I very specifically, along with other staff members, looked through that list, had Plan Commission members look at the list to make sure that we're accommodating the goals that everybody wants for this area and making sure we're not getting uses that are undesirable.
And you know all this stuff, but does everybody else know?
It's on the website. Yeah, we've, we posted, we posted the ordinance almost two weeks ago after. So, so that list of prohibited uses is on the website.
Any additional comments, discussion, or questions for Ben?
I have a, a comment I'd like to read, and then I have a question at the end. So I went ahead and wrote down some things to kind of make it short. This proposed annexation of land at the city has stirred common voices associated with terms like development and growth. Some will be for growth and development, and some will not. The middle ground can become invisible with much emotion. We're free to voice ourselves as to what we are for or against, but our voices should not be used to defame or demonize anyone or any office. This is a delicate balance that we try to maintain in democracy. As a council member, I have a now and rather precise function within the city government structure. The lands which we must look through is through health, safety, and welfare of the city. It's intentionally broad and limits the evaluation of projects, our concerns should be more objective rather than subjective. And this is what frustrates us. We rely on data and numbers to inform our decisions. We ask a lot of questions of city departments, as well as the Lebanon Utilities. We hear concerns from citizens. We try to put all the concerns into evaluation matrix that will never be perfect. How does one weigh the emotion of an individual's farm? I don't know. How does one weigh data? I don't know. How much growth is a step of faith always? That's our determination. The proposed annexation and growth are on a scale larger than we've dealt with, but the approach is still the same. A developer wants to develop it, and we go through the process and evaluate. I'm confident in the information I've gathered and the people I spoke to concerning this ordinance, and I believe the council does act consistently to include the health, safety, and welfare of city and decisions that are made. I view the ordinance before this evening as something positive, but I would expect Eli Lilly as a company set the standard for working with the city to address concerns for citizens now and in the future. I also have a question, and I don't know who's going to answer this, but I'll put it out there. I read a lot of emails, and there was something that was beginning to reoccur, and, and individuals made references like residents were threatened, backed into corners, were forced to sign non-disclosure agreements, bullied, manipulated, and deceived to get off their land. So for the record, I would just ask someone to speak to the process the state went through to obtain the land, reference in this annexation or in this before us, or in general, what is the process of obtaining land for any development? So I don't know who's going to answer that, but that's my question.
My name's Scott Alexander. I'm from the law firm Taft, Statinius &amp; Hollister.
Pull the mic up. Pull the mic up to you. There you go. Thank you.
I'm a little taller than a couple of folks. Fair enough. Scott Alexander from the law firm of Taft, Statinius &amp; Hollister. We represent the IEDC, and in particular to this matter, on different real estate issues and acquisition. To Mr. Jones' question, I, I am the, the manager of IIP LLC, which is the entity that which is the entity that is purchasing many, actually, the properties that would be part of the Lilly Development. With respect to each and every homeowner, I can say without a doubt there was never any pressure, there was never any bullying or anything else with respect to the transactions. A real estate broker was used, offers were made, counteroffers were made in pretty much every occasion from the homeowners. And the homeowners voluntarily entered into a transaction. People talk about citizen rights. These homeowners voluntarily entered into contracts to sell their property to an entity of which the IEDC is a member. And all of those transactions, again, were above board and they were voluntary. I'm happy to answer any questions related to it, but the process was very straightforward.
Any questions? Good?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Comments from council?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. Councilman Kincaid and Councilman Jones beat me to the punch. The whole integrity issue, that's not how you start out a negotiation, okay? If anybody has information that they can show something is below board, please either put it out there in public meeting or go to the authorities tomorrow morning because this council doesn't want to be part of it, okay? So let's get that off the table. I want people to understand, I've lived here longer than several people that spoke, as I think most of the council has, other than Ms. Messenger, by virtue of her age. And I'm not asking for a gold star for that, but the point is, we all live here and we will be affected by this too, okay? So let's just, I wanted to get that out there. There is one thing I did want to say. The public outreach on this project has been handled less than optimally, in my opinion. I realize the state and all their shareholders have a need for secrecy when planning a development. That is absolutely normal and we've seen that many, many times. And it's difficult to coordinate a public relations effort and transparency among so many players in a situation like this. It's a very complicated deal and when you add the state, that many-fold more complicated. I would tell our friends in Indianapolis, if you want to have an easier road in the face of local resistance, somebody needs to get out front, talk to residents and local officials and say, we understand your concerns and here are some of the things we're going to do to work through those concerns. When no information is being shared, people tend to make up their own facts or look for something shady. So getting out in front of it would probably not be a bad idea. And I think folks are upset about this because of it's going to significantly impact their lifestyle and their home, which, other than their family, is their most significant, you know, piece of their life. But I will say, I think we've been very transparent as a city. This is something that came to us. I learned about it from the Lebanon Reporter in May. So there was no secret cabal or meeting or anything like that. That's all I got for right now.
Additional comments?
Yeah, I'd like to add a couple of comments. I have served with three different mayors prior to Mayor Gentry here. And I want to tell you, all three of those mayors at one time wanted high-tech jobs to come to Lebanon, Indiana. And I know the mayor has also expressed that interest too as well. And council members, some of them have expressed the interest over years. Even other council members who were not on the board at the time expressed that interest as well. I also understand the manufacturing part of it. Just like the gentleman back there on the back row brought his information to us. You know, we have always been a little bit reluctant to bring a lot of manufacturing jobs here because we're a very, I'll say, conservative community. But as you can see up and down the highway, we've got a ton of warehouses between here and here in Indianapolis and so forth. And I'm a little tired of warehouses, okay? I'm interested in a little bit of manufacturing, but I want the right manufacturing jobs to come to the county. That's what I'm looking for, the good companies that are coming. My job gets me throughout the state of Indiana. I drive through different communities, different communities that have had a lot of big manufacturing and I see all these big factories gone. You know, I don't want to see that. I go to a nice little community of Connersville, Indiana, quite at least every two weeks. They were a very prosperous community at one time, built the first automobiles early in the 1900s, and Ford Motor Company picked up and left and gone, took the jobs to Mexico. You know, I don't want that here, you know? I want the IDEC. I want you guys to be very selective on the opportunities you're looking to bring to this area. Be very selective. And I want us to have a chance. This council, don't put all the pressure on the mayor. I want this council and the mayor to have an opportunity to look at those companies as well and to have a say because we represent the community. And we need to have a say as well. And the mayor doesn't need all that pressure just stuck on his shoulders making those decisions. So think about that. And I don't want to rush into the next one. This one's, I can tolerate this one, but let's see how this one works. This is your first experience, okay? Let's make it a good experience for you guys, for Boone County, for the state of Indiana as well. So just don't go out and rush to the next one because maybe we okayed this one. You know, let's get this one off the ground, check the balance, you know, check what was good, check what was bad, fix those things, improve on those things before we jump to the next one, okay? We're not in a big hurry, I don't think. I think economic development will be here for a long time. It's just, you know, getting the right people and the right jobs there. So it's my two cents.
Any further comments? Would the applicant like to close or say anything? Ben, anything you want to finish off with? With that then, I would entertain a motion concerning ordinance 2022-19.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-19, project LEAP annexation.
It approves, there are second?
Second.
Second for Morse. All those here say aye?
Aye.
Disposed?
No.
Ordinance is adopted six to one. Thank you, council. That concludes old business. Move on to new business now. Next up is resolution 2022-17, economic development agreement, EDA, for the Fieldhouse project.
You want to wait?
Yeah, we'll stay in recess for a few minutes. Come to order. Okay, we restart our city council meeting here. Again, we're doing new business. First item up is resolution 2022-17, economic development agreement for the Fieldhouse project. So Ben, if you could come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll get close to the microphones so we can all hear.
Thank you, sir.
This economic development agreement that's on your agenda tonight, Ben, this is the culmination of all the work we've been doing over the last six to nine months to put together the project for the Hickory Junction Fieldhouse. A lot of what you see in this agreement tonight are things that we've worked out that have already been before you multiple times before. And then this document just pulls everything together and memorializes it in one document. So we have one document that lines out the commitments from the city and the RDC and the Building Corporation, and then also the commitments from the developer in terms of the development of the project. And that's all outlined in this economic development agreement for you here tonight. So procedurally, this is one of the last public action items that would need to be taken before we can close on the bonds. So we're hoping to get the economic development agreement adopted tonight. And then the Building Corporation will meet Wednesday evening. They would be the last body who would need to approve the economic development agreement. We're scheduled to sell bonds sometime next week and then close on those bonds first week in August, give or take. So we're really hoping, once we get the bonds closed in August and we're ready to really get this thing rolling once they're able to get their approvals from the state on the building. They've already submitted their building permit locally. So we'll be ready to go in August. We'll be ready to go in August, once we get all these last steps done. So in terms of walking through the economic development agreement, again, I said it walks through the obligations on the city and the RDC, the Building Corporation, and also the obligations for the developer in terms of installing the project. It outlines the incentives for the project. And we talked about so many things already, the old holiday insight. The RDC committed that to the project. And then the bonds is the other major part of the incentive program for that, for this development. So those bonds, there is one that's a $24.1 million bond that will fund the construction of the facility itself. And then a second one at $10.5 million net proceeds that will fund a portion of the public infrastructure. It looks like probably about 50 to 60% of the public infrastructure and the overall development. So those are the primary components. And then all the details as it relates to those things are outlined in the economic development agreement here. And then a good portion of the economic development agreement is what happens if scenario. So really, what happens if the developer defaults and doesn't finish construction of the project? What is the scenario that happens in that case? Or what if the city doesn't do something that they're required to do? What happens, what sort of recourse does the developer have? So that's a big part of it is if the worst-case scenario happens out here, then it lays out those items there. The big thing here is if, in terms of other commitments, the developer is also committing a minimum property tax payment every year. We're estimating the property taxes are probably around $150,000 to $200,000 based on what we expect the assessment to be. They're committing to a minimum payment of $300,000 that will all go towards paying the debt service on the bonds. And then they're also additionally committing $600,000 a year out of operating revenues as an additional payment that would go towards those bonds as well. So again, those are in terms of those obligations are all laid out there. If they would happen to default, there's a whole process where we would actually take over ownership of the building. They would essentially default and it would become city's property. So that is an absolute worst-case scenario. We don't expect that to happen. Nobody wants it to happen. But we did have to lay out those worst-case scenarios in the economic development agreement so everybody understands what their role is and obligations are throughout. So that's a real quick overview of that agreement, but I'd be happy to answer any specific questions if there are any.
Are there any questions for Ben about this?
No, sir.
Okay, Rob, can you read the resolution, please?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Resolution 2022-17 is a resolution approving an economic development agreement for the development of certain property in the city. This is defined as the Fieldhouse project, public infrastructure project. Whereas this council has been advised of economic development agreement that was attached as Exhibit A, which sets forth the terms and conditions under which Cart Associates Athletic Facilities LLC, the developers proposing to construct an approximate 190,000 square foot indoor sports complex featuring eight basketball volleyball courts, two fields to support football, soccer, rugby, lacrosse, baseball, and softball. And it will include a mezzanine space, weight facilities, concession space, classroom space, tenant space, and pitching and hitting tunnels as well as other ancillary uses. That's defined again as the Fieldhouse project. Together with the public infrastructure improvements, it consists of roads, a lift station, water mains, drains, drainage, and related improvements, including various roads on State Road 39 intersection, city improvements. And all of that is defined as the public infrastructure project added near the southeast corner by 65 State Road 39 in the city. Whereas this council is reviewing the proposed development agreement in the form presented to this council at this meeting. It is considered the economic impact of the Fieldhouse project and the public infrastructure project and binds that the approval of the development agreement by this council furthers the redevelopment and economic development of the city and will benefit the public health and welfare of the citizens of the city. Therefore, this council hereby determines as follows. The proposed development agreement in the form presented to the council at this meeting is hereby approved. The mayor is authorized to execute the development agreement in the name of and on behalf of the city. With such changes in the form or substance, the mayor shall approve such approval to be conclusively evidenced by the execution thereof. This resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the mayor. And one of the things, Mayor Council, that we have been talking about is Ben indicated, this is substantially the form that we've been talking with the developer and its attorneys. There are a few things still that we're waiting on the developer. We're trying to get those as soon as possible. Ultimately, as Ben indicated, if this is approved, if we get those documents and information and they come to an agreement, then the bonds will go to sale starting next week. So this may change a little bit. One of the things we talked about with RDC, if there are any material changes, then we would need to come back before this council.
That resolution's been read. Any further questions?
I have a question. I thought there would be some medical facility attached to it.
So, go ahead, Ben, continue.
They are looking at an opportunity to build a two- or three-story medical office building out here. It may or may not be attached to the building. I think at this point, it may not be. It may be on a site adjacent. But I know they're negotiating with potential medical partners on that one. And I assume, once we get all this finalized and everything starts getting under construction, we're going to see a lot more activity related to that. But I think at this point, it may be adjacent to the facility rather than connected to it.
I just knew they were going to have it there with it.